Welcome, everyone. Miranda, we feel like has the calendar issue been resolved?
I believe so. I haven't received any more emails.
Okay, very good. Well, as, as I had said five minutes ago, we're going to start sub at seven oh five and it is now seven oh five P M. So we will reconvene this meeting of the Netherland Board of Trustees. For those who have just joined us, we were in executive session since six o'clock. So technically, this meeting is already in operation, but I will have Macy call the role again to make sure that everyone has made it back from there. Quick breaks, Macy?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt. Trustee Coons Isma.
Here.
Mayor Proton Baumhoffer.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
And please note for the record that trustee Danforth is absent tonight.
And this is trustee App.
Thank you, Ellen, and thank you, Macy. All right, we are moving forward. We have a epic, our annual epic consent agenda with all our leases at the community center. There are seven items total in there. Any Board of Trustees members have questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Or emotion?
It took me a little while to figure out the leases, but after I looked at all of them, they started making sense. Not, not hearing anyone else, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Oops, sorry.
We have a motion and a second from trustee App. Got in there first, Macy?
Mayor Proton Baumhoffer.
Heard a very faint yes.
Me too. Trustee Coons Isma.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
And trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is unanimously passed. Thank you. Moving forward into public comment, we received four public comments on non-agenda items that are in the packet this evening. If anyone else would like to speak on anything that we are not discussing in the course of our evening, now would be your opportunity. Please catch our eye, catch our by dancing, speaking, somehow letting us know you have something to say, and you can have up to three minutes. As a reminder, please identify yourself and whether you're a town resident or not. And I will open the floor up.
This is Rick Hendrickson. I have something.
Please, Rick, welcome.
Oh, oh, Happy New Year. As you no doubt all know, we had quite an end to last year and a start to this year from the fire standpoint of things. We were involved in both the fire north of Boulder and the Marshall Fire. We sent people down to both fires. I was on the Marshall Fire for two days after the big run of it the first day. As you can imagine, the scene on site is just as horrific as you've seen in all the news. So it's gonna take a long time to rebuild. Also want to thank this board and the staff for all the support and getting the coach upgraded. And I think that sort of thing is going to help us in the future and working on mitigation projects as well. Sometimes down there, they had winds over a hundred miles an hour, and there's just not much you can do if you're right in front of it. But if you're along the side, we know you've got a lot of little better chance and reducing those fuel loads, whether it be your neighbor's house, which obviously we can't do, but you can protect yours better. And also the native vegetation that we all talked about for a long time certainly is going to help. So we're going to continue to watch that. It looks like we got a little bit of moisture coming here this week and then warm and dry for a couple of weeks. So I, and I have a feeling we're going to be back, back down the hill helping out down there before the winter is over, so unfortunately. So just wanted to say thanks for, excuse me, the support we've had on the code changes and we want to keep working at it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick, and I'm, you know, glad that you and all the, all the firefighters got in and out of there safely.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to speak on a non-agenda item? Not seeing or hearing any. We will move forward on to the agenda with our first informational item about the Netherland Winter Economic Boost Program. And Macy, you are going to be introducing this for us.
All right. Hello, Mayor, Board of Trustees and members of the public. At the last Board of Trustee meeting on December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one, we were reminded that the town once implemented a program called Nedweb, which stands for Netherland Winter Economic Boost Program. Upon doing further research about Nedweb and hosting a meeting to learn more about the program, Miranda and I learned that the purpose of this program was to collect data about consumer behavior and create a sustainable local economy by promoting residents to support local businesses. Residents who shop locally collected their receipts, and when they acquired receipts that contained one hundred dollars worth of local support, the resident came into Town Hall and exchanged their receipts for a fifteen dollar voucher. The resident was then inspired to shop locally once again to cash in their voucher at a local business within sixty days. The business owner accepted the fifteen dollar voucher as payment towards their purchase. And once the business owner collected a voucher, they were eligible to come into Town Hall within the same calendar year to cash in their voucher for fifteen dollars plus one dollar for their participation. When this program was implemented in two thousand and thirteen, funds received from the Boulder County Economic Vitality Grant were used. If the Board of Trustees wants to revisit this program, American Rescue Plan Act funds could be used, or town could see if Boulder County Economic Vitality Grant funds would be available for this in two thousand and twenty two. So the questions before the board. Does the Board of Trustees approve implementing a pilot Netherland, a pilot Netherland Winter Economic Boost Program for two thousand and twenty two? And if so, what funding source would the Board of Trustees like to use? ARPA, Boulder County Economic Vitality Grant, or et cetera? Thank you.
Thank you, Macy. And I think we're just to be clear with this as an information item, so the idea would be if board members are interested in pursuing this, we would direct town staff to develop the program under a certain funding and bring it back for action item in a, in a future board member, board. But it is a informational item, sort of not a discussion. So board members, do you have questions for Macy or town staff regarding what was in the packet regarding the Winter Economic Boost Program?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah.
So Miranda or Macy's, or whoever knows about this. The, the first time we did this in two thousand and thirteen, we did gather some information. There was data gathered, not what you'd call a scientifically significant collection of data, but there was, there were some inklings that maybe this was a good idea, an interesting idea. The first time we did it in two thousand and thirteen, I think that was our pilot program. We've already kind of done that. And so the question I have for staff is, what lessons did we learn from that program? And how are we imagining the current program to be changed in hopes that it would be even more effective?
I don't fancy, Miranda, I don't, none of us were here, but I would love to invite Katrina Harms if she could chime in on lessons learned. Now, the way in which the program is structured, I think because Town Hall distributes a lot of items now to businesses, it is something we could probably redo in its format and be really successful in doing so because we have those relationships built. But maybe if Katrina, you've got any additional lessons learned, if she's there.
Hi, I am here. Oh. Sorry. I'm shouting over the snow, I guess. And the lessons learned, I, I feel like it was a fairly, I don't want to say successful, but I know that businesses turned in their vouchers and got money. I know as a business owner during that time, we, we had several new customers who had never been in a store. So that was nice. I feel like Town Hall at that time did a really good job of communicating to the people that came in and issuing vouchers to both business owners and to the public. And I feel like in my memory that it, it did foster some engagement around businesses and shopping local during an extremely slow time. So I cannot remember and I didn't read through the packet to see if there was how much money was distributed to, to whom. But I do know that the money was spent and that that did help businesses. It did give businesses some income.
It's clearly inspiring to businesses, this proposal, to try this again. We have a lot of businesses who sent in responses saying, yes, we'd really like to do this. And while we didn't see evidence that we were drawing people in from outside, we did see some anecdotal evidence that regular customers were coming in more often, possibly as a result of that program. So, so maybe we do look at this as a pilot program because we're kind of, in a way, we're kind of starting over with new people. It, it looks, it looks like something that not that expensive. It looks like a reasonably inexpensive experiment. And I think that if we were perhaps to take our better communication with our vendors in town and add to that perhaps some really simple communications to the customers as to how this works. I mean, if we could turn this into like four bullet points on a plaque that's in all the participating businesses, I think that would help to, to increase its popularity. So, yeah, yeah, very nice. It looks like an interesting idea. First one, I would agree Katrina was not what I would call a great success, but kind of a pathfinder for what may turn into a big success.
There are a lot of new businesses in town from that timeframe and also a lot of new people who may not have the chance to go in and visit some of the businesses. We did give businesses the option to opt out, and if you did, partly because they felt like it might be taxing to them more work than what they wanted to do, and that was what the extra dollar was for. But I really think that the way that program ended up was positive. And I think with new businesses and new residents, it would be, it would be a good, a good time to do it again.
Thank you.
Other trustees, comments, thoughts? I mean, I guess I would just kind of echo some of the things Julian said is, you know, I see this as a fairly inexpensive program. They have direct financial impact for businesses and residents. And, you know, the type of thing if we could roll out, you know, it looks like the first time we did was six thousand dollars worth of vouchers. You know, doing something like that here is particularly targeting sort of the slow season that we're coming into as a chance to get, you know, use ARPA funds to directly using ARPA, I guess, or Boulder Economic Grant, though that one might take a little bit longer for us to get in our, get our hands on to bring, you know, benefit to the, the business community, I think it'd be really good, direct benefit to the business could be really awesome. So I would love, personally, I would love to see this come back with some idea of what it would take, you know, would it be a five thousand dollar program this time or a ten thousand that we could roll out in February? That or early March, I think that would be a great thing. I'd love to see come back on an agenda item. Other trustees?
I agree. I think it's, you know, it seems like a lot of bang for the buck, my impression.
Like how it helps both shoppers and businesses simultaneously. I think that that's a really elegant solution to multiple problems. And, you know, I think we've all noticed that the B N F's hours are reduced even further. And, you know, at a certain point, we're not going to be able to get there before we get home from work. So that is something that does need to be addressed, and this would go some way to doing that as it seems clear that most people would use it there.
I, I would like to advocate against using the ARPA funds because at least this tranche of ARPA funds is already pretty dry. But absolutely from some other source of funding, I would feel very comfortable with this.
I'd be in favor of it. Said especially what trustee Taylor said, that I'd be against ARPA funds, but besides that, I think this is a worthwhile program. And the last time it was tried, I think, was kind of earlier in the kind of local movement. And I think we're coming a lot further along with the idea of local movements, especially now. So it's worthwhile to try this again and really promote it.
All right. Thank you, town staff. Thank you, Macy, for presenting that. Look forward to seeing this come back before us in a coming.
Is there public comment?
Not on information items. We are going to move on to our second information item. Miranda, please introduce it.
All right, it's election time, as I mentioned previously. Today, the nomination petitions were released this morning, though. So just kind of a couple of things I want to make sure everyone's aware of is obviously the election will be April fifth. The trustees with terms ending in April is Mayor Larson, trustee Apt, trustee Corvallin and trustee Danforth. In order to, whether they're going to seek reelection or there's someone new who wants to seek election, nomination petitions will need to be completed. Well, what's in the packet is a draft. The official ones are on our website. And so you can visit our website for those, and those are due Monday, January twenty fourth. In addition, people can choose to seek to be a writing candidate, and those affidavits are due on Monday, January thirty first. Also, it's a time starting tomorrow where people can do a request for absentee ballots. They can request them from tomorrow, January fifth, up until Friday, April first. We provided some information in here about how to register to vote if people haven't done so yet. And the plan will be at every board meeting between now and the election is just, just have an informational election update to let you all know where we are in the process and to answer any questions. So that being said, are there questions?
Trustees have any questions for Miranda?
I'm with you. Voting is good.
Yes, agreed.
All right. Thank you, Miranda, and just encourage everyone to collect your petitions and start getting signatures. Get on the ballot. We have two action items before us this evening, beginning with one, well, this is, I think, the last one we did at our last meeting. So Miranda, please.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, the Board of Trustees had approved three requests, which were on the consent agenda. You did ask for the mountaineer Barbara Hartz to come back with more information about her Keep It Local campaign. Trustee Corvallin had also asked for information about premium pay for the fire protection district, so that's in the packet. And then the board had previously expressed desire to use a series of different COVID funding for hybrid meeting systems. We have exhausted our CARES account, and so there are no more funds there. So we are asking that the board consider paying the remaining invoice balance, which is two thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars and thirty one cents with ARPA funds. But I think to start this discussion, action item, I'd like to turn it back over to Barb to give more information on the Keep It Local campaign.
Great, thank you, Miranda. I just wanted to, I, I put a lot more information in the packet, and I'm hoping that you all have read the packet. And I just wanted to share a little bit of information back that I have collected both through my work on the project as well as from community members. I want to start with a strong local economy, among other things, builds community resilience. Netherland is one of the most resilient communities I am lucky enough to be a part of. I've lived in the peak to peak region for thirty five years. A survey released in two thousand and eighteen by American Express and NFIB found that sixty seven cents of every dollar spent at a small business remains in the community. Most of the money you spend at a local business stays here. This campaign is geared to help people find out about the businesses that are in the community, spend their money in the community, and keep the money in the community. I would like to also propose co-branding the campaign with the town of Netherland to provide additional support to the town, share with the community how supportive the town is of local businesses, and include the town logo on all of the pages, along with adding in a shop local program similar to the vouchers you're talking about this evening. That would be featured in each ad for the entire year. In the last three years, the mountaineer has come through incredible change. We have refocused everything about the newspaper. We've come through the loss of our main contributor, hired people to expand our coverage, expanded our website. Sorry. And social media campaigns and more. We have forty contributors now, of which twenty two are paid. We hire within the communities we cover from interns to longtime journalists. These are your neighbors, business owners, and members of the greater peak to peak region. In my fifteen years at the paper, we have gone from a struggling paper with less than six hundred subscriptions to over a thousand print subscribers this week, and a website with less than a thousand users to a website with over eighty eight hundred users. COVID nineteen has been difficult for us financially, but more than that, it is difficult for the businesses in town. Many were closed for a month, two months, some were closed longer. If the mountaineers stopped publishing, the impact on other businesses would be huge. The mountaineer reaches the entire peak to peak region, bringing people from outside Netherland into shop in town. I also want to mention that I have met with Ned to Go to find out if we can have a collaboration from their website to ours and vice versa, as well as sharing the stories of all the businesses through their website. I'm waiting to get a response from Stephanie's partner who was out of town. I ask you to please consider approving this proposal this evening so we can get started on this important project, supporting the town of Netherland businesses, the town of Netherland overall, and sharing the stories with all of our readers and contributors to the mountaineer.
Thank you, Barb. Trustees have, sorry, I'm gonna get questions here in a second. I just want to, Miranda, you want to address this one first and then the other things you brought up?
Yeah, I was thinking so. We want to take them one at a time.
Yep. So trustees have questions for Barb about the, the new, the new proposal she has come forward with. Trustee Taylor?
No, the proposal looked very thorough and seemed to have good support from the community and from businesses.
Tanya?
I don't have any questions for Barb. My only question is to Miranda as to how much money is actually left in the funds?
So there actually, there is not enough to fund Barb's request in its entirety from this first tranche. What is left over is twenty three thousand eight hundred and forty three dollars and twenty six cents, so.
How much is Barb asking for?
I was asking for twenty five thousand, so you could give all of this to Barb, and then we make up the rest in the second tranche. But.
Okay, that's, yeah, just, and then either you were also, okay, so we'll talk about budgeting, I guess, later, but you were needing a couple thousand for the finish up the hybrid, or is that why there's a couple thousand missing from today?
We used nine thousand two hundred and forty seven dollars and sixty nine cents from CARES funding. And when we cover the rest of that invoice, we would need to use two thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars and thirty one cents from ARPA.
Is that already taken out, and that's why there's twenty three thousand, or do we need to take that out as well?
Yeah, that's not been taken out. That's an ask tonight.
That's an ask tonight. Okay, I'm just trying to figure it out.
A point of clarification, too, I think, Tanya, you're, you're getting to this is the premium pay for Public Works and Police Department did not include payroll taxes. So what was approved, the total amount was twenty four thousand one hundred and ninety nine dollars and twenty three cents in order to cover the amount needed for payroll taxes.
Okay.
Eric?
Yeah, I, that makes more sense now that I understand the, the budget situation. I don't have questions. I think this looks like a great proposal, and I'm excited to see all that additional information. I think it makes our decision much easier to make.
Okay, Alan?
I think it's a good idea. I'm wondering if there's any way to increase the distribution of the newspaper beyond the thousand, you know, I guess that's a question for Barb. With some handouts, or some kind of special promotional things that are freebies, it could be distributed more, more broadly. I mean, it sounds like you've got a thousand is, is a good number and eighty eight hundred on the website. But if you have any thoughts that we're, you could distribute more papers somehow to get more exposure?
Absolutely. That's the number of papers we're currently mailing. We actually distributed over two thousand papers this week. And we have, we have anywhere from twenty five to forty thousand hits on our website every month. We have eighty eight hundred regular users on our website. So we, our, our reach is much beyond those numbers right there. As well, we do saturations, and we do saturations quarterly. So every three months, we send out a newspaper to every central city address. And then a week or two later, we do it to every Netherland address and Blackhawk and Pine Cliff, Rollinsville, Allen's Park, Ward and Jamestown. So that's, that's kind of happening year round. And sometimes we target like Gilpin County after the Gilpin County Fair. So we do a really big wrap up. So we do every address in Blackhawk, which is over two thousand addresses. So we're reaching more than that number every quarter, but we only do the saturations once a quarter.
That sounds great. I had a different question. Somebody tell me that the Build Back Better bill, which has not been passed, and who knows if it will, had money for newspapers, small newspapers. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know anything about that one. We received several grants last year through different entities specific to newspapers. We have a grant going right now where we were trying to raise five thousand dollars. We've raised close to seven, and that's a matching grant up to five thousand. So we'll actually receive five thousand from that. That goes, is more geared toward a different program, including our podcast, keeping that going. We're a year old on our podcast. And then we, we are always applying. We apply for every single thing we see. We got a Google News initiative last year, and that, that's kind of literally what keeps the paper alive is getting grants and doing projects like this to help not only the paper expand, but to help people in the community understand what's going on in the community.
Okay, thank you. Keep, keep up the good work. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Trustee Baumhoffer, or sorry, Mayor Proton Baumhoffer?
Trustee's fine. I really don't have any questions. This was a very, very thoroughly laid out, and I'm all in favor of this, I think. Local kind of businesses definitely need a lot more attention from the local community. A strong community is really made up of the folks that live, shop, work, and pretty much are one hundred percent a part of this community. The more that we all give back to the town and the businesses, the more those businesses are able to grow and provide better services for us. So I'm all about this, and I actually, you know, looking at the proposal right now is just kind of question and answer, but I guess my thought would be if we have budgetary questions, is it possible maybe to give twenty three thousand to this request and then throw the remaining eight hundred twenty three forty six cents at the hybrid? throw the remaining eight hundred twenty-three forty-six cents at the hybrid invoice? And, uh, if that would be something that would be workable for The Mountaineer and you, Barb?
Well, I think one proposal before the, the board right now, Jonathan, is the idea of paying the hybrid out of the ARPA funds, paying for, you know, whatever is left of that, you know, twenty-one thousand, twenty thousand, whatever, to The Mountaineer, and then when we get our second tranche of money in June, halfway through the year, we would then pay the remainder of the twenty-five K to The Mountaineer. So The Mountaineer would get the full twenty-five K. It's just it'll be a delayed payment for that last little bit.
All right, that makes sense. That's what Eric and Tanya were clarifying. Apologies, I was not at the last meeting. So, yeah, I'm all in favor of this, and I just wanted to say it looks like you've done an extreme amount of work reaching out to the businesses, and I really loved the idea of partnering with the town, and I thought it would be a great opportunity for the town to partner with its local businesses and really continue to build that relationship with our local business community.
For sure, I would echo all of that, and I will just throw in for Alan, um, the, the thing in the Build Back Better bill for newspapers is a payroll tax credit that all, uh, newspapers could claim on their employees. So there is something in there if, if, if it ever gets past the Senate. Big if there. Um, I am going to open this up. This is an action item, so I'm gonna take public comment on that this evening. Uh, so if anyone from the public would like to speak on what you've heard from, uh, from Barbara or from, uh, the ARPA funds, now would be your opportunity, and I see a hand up already. Mr. Jim Reese, please, you know, identify yourself again, and you can have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jim Reese. I live at sixty-six Barker Road in Netherlands, Colorado. I am, uh, also wanting to voice my, uh, full support for this proposal for The Mountaineer and for Barbara Hart. Uh, I think The Mountaineer is a huge part of our community as well as the entire peak-to-peak region, and, you know, the loss of such a community resource, uh, would be just tragic. Uh, I mean, the impact would be years, uh, down the line. I don't, you know, Barb's, I think you put together really great, uh, information on this, and losing eighty percent of your revenue during COVID must have been extremely hard. Uh, I would be interested to know, because of, from my conversations with you, even on a good year, you guys are running extremely tight, and, and, uh, no one's getting rich over there. Uh, so I would encourage the town to not only pay that full twenty-five thousand with that second tranche, but look for a more long-term partnership with such a community resource as The Mountaineer, because the impact on businesses, uh, the local government is, is far beyond, exponentially beyond, uh, what a single business would happen, uh, would have on the community if it would fail. So, uh, I'm a hundred percent in support of this, and I ask that you consider ways to do more uh, with funding that comes down for more long-term partnerships, uh, with The Mountaineer, so that there's no, uh, question that this, uh, would be a resource going forward for many years to come. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And I see a hand up from Katrina. Oh, Katrina Harms? Maybe not. Your hand disappeared again.
No, that was me. I didn't unmute. Um, I have been using The Mountaineer to advertise vaccination clinics now for the last six months, maybe a little more. I can't remember. Um, and it really does reach out to people. I can tell by the phone calls I get versus what I, from the people who respond on social media. And, um, I really think that the town partnering with The Mountaineer like this and maybe even with the MedWeb and other stuff really shows the support for the businesses, and I feel like this is a great time to engage the businesses and focus on our resiliency and work together. And I think Barb's done a great job with the paper over the last few years with all of her challenges, so I'm, I'm happy to see the support for this. Thanks.
Thank you, Katrina. Uh, I, I've been remiss here. I was meant to, I saw we have a couple call-in users. If any call-in users wants to speak, just as a reminder, you have to hit star six to unmute yourself on the WebEx platform. Um, but again, any other members of the public who would like to speak? I'm not hearing or seeing any further public comment. So I will bring this back to the board, and, uh, just for a little quick clarification here, um, if we go forward with what we've been discussing this evening about, uh, funding the remainder of the hybrid option out of the ARPA grant, then within this first tranche, The Mountaineer will get a total of twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents from this, the current tranche of ARPA funds we have. And then when we receive our second tranche, uh, in June, July of this year, an additional three thousand three hundred and eighteen and dollars and five cents will, will be applied to that automatically. Um, so with our, you know, following what we've done before, we would be looking for any further thoughts, comments from the board or a motion regarding these two, and if so, then we will bring back a resolution within the consent agenda of our next meeting to formally approve the use of these ARPA funds for The Mountaineer and for the hybrid meeting option. So first, any other further thoughts, comments from Board of Trustees, or I guess if anyone would like to make a motion?
I have some questions of, about about the financial considerations portion, because I may not be reading that correctly. We note, uh, several items under, uh, financial considerations, including payoff utility bills in arrears and accounts. That's something we've talked about for a long time. We committed to that two meetings ago. Are these things, uh, list in that list, things which we have already paid?
Or?
Yes. Good. Excellent. Then I have no other question.
Well, in the last three, you approved the resolutions for tonight, so now we'll move forward with those payments.
Sure, right. That was, that was the, that was the, I just wanted to make sure I was not misreading that.
Nope.
Further thoughts, comments?
I just had a question about, maybe I missed this, this, this page, uh, describing the, the fire second district premium pay. What, what is that information?
So trustee Corvallin had asked that maybe we reach out to the fire department to see if they would provide their payroll information, so we could do exactly what we do for Police Department and Public Works. Um, so I connected with them. They provided their data for their paid employees plus their volunteers. And if they kind of structured it the same way we did Police Department and Fire, their payout, um, would be twenty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. This is something you can absolutely look at with the second round of funding. Um, and just kind of put it on the back burner for now, but I did want to just bring forward that information after trustee Corvallin requested.
Right, but I, I guess my question was, has it been determined that they have not received premium pay?
No, they have not. So they're not, it would be the town providing their, our ARPA funding, because they didn't get separate ARPA funding. County were to give them some of theirs.
Understood. Thank you. And there's, and there's no, uh, time issues with waiting for the next tranche of funding to consider?
No, because it's all employees who worked in March twenty-twenty to December twenty-twenty. Um, I think the only impact would be if they have someone left who had been up employee during that time. Um, but, you know, I, I do think this is something you could look at later.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't, you know, making a decision on this by making a decision on the other two.
Yeah, I think we're just saying that we're gonna delay revisiting this request in about six months from now.
Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the distribution of funds to The Mountaineer as requested.
Do we need to include the hybrid funding in the motion, Miranda?
That would be great.
Okay, uh, and also provide, uh, partial payment, uh, the final payment for the hybrid funding.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Macy, would you please call the vote?
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesma?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhoffer?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
And trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Barbara, thank you again for bringing back and addressing the questions the board had for you. We look forward to seeing this project move forward with The Mountaineer.
Thank you so much, everyone.
All right, we are moving forward into our second action item of this evening, which should look familiar, since we've had several discussion, several times this has come before us, is our subdivision code. Uh, this will be introduced to us this evening by our town attorney, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the, um, Board of Trustees, this is Jennifer Madsen. And as the mayor mentioned, draft ordinance eight-twenty has been before the Board of Trustees on a couple of occasions before. Um, the last time, I believe, was in October of twenty-twenty-one, and that was for a work session discussion. So I'll just do a very brief overview of this ordinance. It's a rewrite of chapter seventeen, the subdivision regulations. Um, the existing chapter seventeen would be repealed and replaced with these new regulations. Um, ordinance eight-twenty includes new processes to address some unique situations that are not currently addressed in town code. And the ordinance also provides some clarity to existing processes. These subdivision regulations create new review processes to complement the significance of the type of subdivision application. In other words, for simple applications such as a lotline adjustment, the application is reviewed and approved by the town administrator and the planning commission. Um, the draft regulations also define a clear and simpler process for minor subdivisions. Under these regulations, there's only one review by the planning commission and the Board of Trustees. So I'm, that ends the overview, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
All right, we'll go around here with any questions from the Board of Trustee, beginning with trustee Apt.
No questions.
Trustee Taylor?
Uh, it looked like you cleaned things up very nicely, so no questions.
Trustee Kumsesma?
Still don't like the looseness of the language regarding, uh, the conformance of the comprehensive plan, uh, but I think that then it becomes incumbent upon us to make a comprehensive plan that can be evaluated by these criteria.
Trustee Corvallin?
Oh, I just was wanting some clarification on minor subdivisions. Um, what is the process currently? The new process is Planning Commission and then the BOT. What is the current process?
Um, the new pro, or the current process, um, it goes back, there's a, a preliminary plat processing, so it, it goes back. Um, it's the Planning Commission, Board of Trustees, and then, um, I believe it goes back to the Planning Commission and then the Board of Trustees.
So two times? Okay.
Yes.
I guess that seems redundant. I mean, I suppose the Board of Trustees could always send it back to the Planning Commission to work things out as, as something they would, that they could say with this new ordinance?
Yes.
I mean, that's a choice that the Board of Trustees could do, but, um, before you're saying currently it's mandatory that it goes back.
Um, yes, I believe that that's the case. It's been a while since I've had a, a.
I guess I'm just trying to clarify the difference that we're voting upon, like, the biggest difference. And so it sounds like that's the biggest, the difference?
There, that is actually probably not the biggest difference. Um, there are additional processes in this new ordinance. For example, lotline adjustments, some plat corrections.
Um, for the minor subdivisions, that's the difference?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, um, thanks.
Thank you, Tanya. Mayor Protem Baumhoffer?
No questions. Looks good.
Yep, yeah, this looks, looks good and looks, I mean, it's what we've talked about a couple months ago. Uh, it is an action item, so I will open the floor to public comment. Any member of the public would like to speak on the subdivision ordinance eight-twenty? Now would be your chance. Catch our attention. Name whether you're resident or not, and you can have three minutes of the floor. Not seeing or hearing anything. I'll bring it back to the board for final comments, or if anyone would like to make a motion regarding ordinance eight-hundred and twenty.
I move to approve the ordinance number eight-twenty, an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Netherlands, Colorado, repealing and replacing chapter seventeen of the Netherlands Municipal Code related to regulations of subdivision of land.
Do we have a second?
Just Alan's second.
We have a motion and a second. Macy, please call the vote.
Trustee Kumsesma?
No.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhoffer?
Yes.
Trustor Valen?
Yes.
And Mayor Larson?
Yes. Motion is passed, uh, vote of five to one. Thank you all very much. Thus concludes our action items for this evening. We do have two discussion items, and we will move right into those, since we are actually moving along at a pretty good clip tonight. Uh, so Miranda, if you would please introduce to us the Frozen Dead Guy Days license, or?
Yes, so we have the license agreement before you for Frozen Dead Guy Days. Um, town staff, which includes Public Works, Police Department, admin, and Fire Department, with Attorney Madsen, uh, to draft the license agreement. It was then sent over to Sarah Martin and Amanda McDonald, as well as their attorney, um, did a little back and forth, but tonight is the license agreement that both parties feel is appropriate, and we are now putting it before the board. If you agree with it, this could be moved to action for adoption tonight, or we could bring it back at the next meeting. And we have numerous Frozen Dead Guy Day representatives on. Should there be any questions about the event?
As I say, I see, yep, I see Amanda and Sarah on here. Thanks for joining us this evening. Board of Trustees, uh, questions or comments regarding what we've seen in this license? And I will kick it off with, you know, you mentioned it's been back and forth, and, uh, all of town staff and all the town departments approve of what's in here?
Yes, we do.
And, and we also, you know, um, I guess I could ask this to Amanda and Sarah and their attorney. You guys, uh, are in agreement to this license as well?
We are.
Awesome. Wow, that covers my question. Uh, Jonathan, you have any questions for them?
I didn't have any questions. Uh, that would pretty much be my questions, I guess. Just one little clarification, just maybe to clear up some potential nastiness going on, or was going on. It looks like in the deposit, the deposit was actually, the eight thousand two hundred and fifty was paid to Public Works, using Public Works as labor for the event. Is that correct?
And so we collected a deposit where, should there be damage to Gersio, um, that it would cover either the cost of labor by Public Works Department, or if we felt that we didn't have the personnel, we could then use that set amount of funding to contract elsewhere. Um, ideally, we hope to not get there, but, uh, that's what that's for.
Okay, and that will be refunded, and ideally, okay, sweet. No questions then.
All right. All right, uh, trustee Kumsesma.
Yeah, I'm glad that uh an agreement could be reached. I I mean, I just point out, this was also discussed kind of at length uh with ProSab as well. So this uh, you know, has been vetted through pretty much everybody that we've got, as well as all of staff. Um, but I do think that it does mean that we need to kind of rethink the way we do leases. Um, for especially now that it's going to be uh, you know, a a new park that uh we want to preserve uh in as high quality as possible, uh, without making it so difficult and so costly, especially on the deposit and for people who might want to use the park for an event like Frozen Day Guy Day. So I don't think anybody was particularly happy with uh this agreement on any side. I think that it was a compromise and I'm happy that we were able to come to one. Uh, so I think that's good going forward, but we do need a better process for this.
Thank you, Eric. Tanya.
I I don't have any questions.
Alan?
It looks very thorough and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and I would suggest we make it an action item and pass it tonight.
Okay, Julian?
Uh, no, no questions.
Okay, um, you know, before we actually decide to make it an action item, I think it's a discussion. I just want to also offer Amanda, Sarah, if you guys have anything you'd like to to add, or if you'd like to make any comment. You've been here for an hour so far.
Uh, I would like to say something.
Yeah.
So wow, it's been six hundred and sixty-four days since we all last met. It's been really hard, you guys, really, really hard. And the world has changed and I want to thank you all for what happened a year ago, nine months and twenty-four days. What the Town of Netherlands did when COVID hit and how you all galvanized with us during such uncertainty and it it it's really remarkable. And and it and and we are so grateful for uh the opportunity to be back sort of here. Uh, when I say sort of, that's gratitude sort of. We're very grateful that this is happening right now. Um, with this process in the last uh one year, nine months and twenty-four days. I I will tell you that it is not a sustainable and and clearly not sustainable going forward. Uh, our event isn't uh it's not a moneymaker and it has been attached specifically in Colorado, specifically in Netherlands. And going forward, uh, this may not ever happen in Netherlands again. There is no partnership. There is no uh uh any break uh to bring in the financial uh opportunities that this event does present itself. Our mission, and clearly I have been misinterpreted about what this festival is because people think it's about money and it's not. Our our mission as a company is, even though we are for profit, it is keep them safe, pay the bills, try and have some fun. Public record will show with our SBOG grants uh through the SBA that in two thousand and nineteen, we had a a gross of three hundred and two thousand dollars or something. We netted thirty-two. Because we have written grants, which by the way, every single organization that we talked to uh from the SBA, everyone knew what we were. So outside of Netherlands, we are very well known and very well respected. Inside of Netherlands, uh, eh, maybe. So I will say that we understand that we cannot control those numbers. We are not actively trying to sell more tickets. A lot of this event is free. A lot of this event is a whimsical cultural event festival that is specific to the story of uh Beredo Musto, who will probably be leaving Netherlands uh because odd died. And so again, the story can always change. But uh the pain, the actual physical pain that has gone on uh in reworking this event and with this guidelines of keeping this town and this our attendees safe. I I don't see a huge future uh because we will not be left with enough money to make these deposits and pay for the police uh required programs. I, we understand that that there's a lot of things that have changed, obviously with Charlottesville and 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 uh Austin, and we know that large events need things in every other circumstance of any other event that I have worked and have been a part of, there is a partnership. And there it and people work together. And I don't think that Ned has that, those financial wherewithal or the support actually of the people that are in play to allow us to look past uh what has occurred uh and is demanded. We have zero waste. We did that in two thousand and twenty. We had a parking plan. We did that in two thousand and twenty. We have a police plan, did that in two thousand and twenty. We have an excellent security team that's coming up that has been phenomenal and they're working in municipalities right now. They took, they i- i- if you guys look at the security teams that we brought in, we showed them what you all sent to us and how we got here. And they they basically said, no one in Netherlands wants you. And so I want you all to know that I'm really glad that you guys want us. I hope you do. We'll be there March eighteenth, nineteenth and twentieth. And, you know, fingers crossed that the world stays safe and that we stay safe. We'll always follow guidelines. That is our number one rule. And we'll see what happens going forward. We have been so grateful for everything that has gone on. And I don't know if Amanda wants to add anything, but I will tell you, I have never experienced anything like this. And I don't think anyone was happy and I don't know why. Because this, but I I don't understand it and 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 it's not because I'm confused. I I just uh I I look forward to the future and I hope that you all will come to some agreement and some kind of um positive outcome because if we are that much of a problem and this year, I believe you will see that we are doing absolutely everything we can and uh that maybe we can go forward, but I, you know, it's, I feel like a variant at this point. That's it. Amanda, do you have anything to add? And thank you. Thank you all so much. And everyone that worked with us and everyone that helped us and every single solitary person that has given us uh any kind of merchandise order, we appreciate it. We need it.
Thanks, Sarah. If I could just have just a few minutes, um. Yeah, I I think the biggest, the 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 end shocker was the four hundred and fifty percent, four hundred and fifty percent increase on police duties.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, we paid fifty-eight hundred in two thousand and nineteen. We were basing all budgets around that. Totally understand it's a new world and increasing that. And so we increased our 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 security budget, we doubled it. And then we were initially handed a fifty-eight thousand dollar estimate for police services. And then they took it down to thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-seven, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
So you know. An estimate that we have to agree to pay because it's for security. And uh, I just just want that to be noted that it's just not sustainable. And I don't know what event, me, I don't even think the Pepsi Center pays that.
They actually don't.
Anyhow, so that was the last shocker. And uh, you know, obviously deposit was difficult and July twenty-ninth being told, can we just move it somewhere else? So um, yeah, and and honestly, we're basically back to our two thousand and twenty plan uh outside of the police bill. But anyhow, yeah, so I just wanted to be noted that we'd really like to understand um justification for our four hundred and uh fifty percent increase on police services for the event.
So the, so with the Small Business Association, but we'll get to that in March, April.
But we want this agreement because we need to move forward this year. So we were told, you know, this is what we have to accept.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Sarah. Um, I want to also throw this open since we're, you know, I want to throw this open. I'm sure there's members of the public here would like to speak on this as well. So I'll throw the floor open to members of the public. Anyone, usual drill, anyone like to speak on the license agreement we're discussing this evening? Now would be your opportunity. Keep in mind that it's uh, we've had one trustee already suggest moving this to an action item this evening. So it was to give uh Amanda and Sarah the opportunity to move forward with, you know, confidence that this is what it is. Um, so anyone who'd like to speak, catch our attention and you can have up to three minutes. Again, call in users, star six to unmute. Not hearing or seeing any.
Hello?
Oh, there we go. I hear one now. Please identify yourself and you can have three minutes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Kathleen Chipai Magnolia Star Root, thirty years, uh eighteen year business owner. Um. Okay, I I I'm sure everybody knows I'm practically speechless by what I just heard. And it's very interesting to me tonight that it, the initial attack on festivals in Netherlands began uh in two thousand and thirteen. And it was when the money that was given for the economic grant went from going to the advertising of the festivals, um, which brought in massive economic boosts to our community. Uh, that money got turned into the completely failed Nedweb program. So it is so ironic to me tonight that Nedweb somehow got revived, a failed program that generated a hundred and sixty dollars in retail sales taxes over a five month period. Because it was five thousand, it was six thousand dollars minus a thousand to create the program. Five thousand divided into three hundred and thirty-three tickets for fifteen dollars apiece. And the money raised was was limited to the hundred and sixty dollars in retail sales tax. So it is so funny to me that that is being revived tonight. And then I hear that basically you have successfully in a decade run Nedfest and now Frozen Dead Guy out of the town by making things so impossible. And this is disgusting. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And you know what? I was one of those people who opted out of the Nedweb program because it made no sense because I might have what? Earned a dollar or two dollars for handing in my coupon? The whole thing was a failure. I am going to pull up my notes from that and resubmit them so the public can see what kind of failure this is. But I'm sure that now you can figure out, I guess now we see why the money that was used to market the festivals that made three hundred to a half a million dollars in a one weekend for this community and for these businesses is now going to go back to a Nedweb program. I can't even believe it. You're killing the festivals as you have been working on for ten years. You're doing it. And from what I just heard, you just did it tonight. Final nail in the coffin. Shame on all of you. Shame on everyone that participated in this.
Okay, as a reminder, we're taking public comment on license agreement, not the Nedweb program. Uh, any other members of the public like to speak on the license agreement? Not hearing or seeing any. I will bring this back to the board for any further discussions or uh, as Alan suggested already, uh, possible movement of motion to move this to an action item this evening.
Uh, this is Tanya. I have a question.
Yeah.
I would like to ask whoever was involved with this, because we were not. This is the first I've seen of this. Why the police fees increased so dramatically and can they go back to the price that they were two years ago? What is?
Do you want to answer that, Miranda?
Yeah, so when the police department built the staffing plan, I guess just for context, just to cover our officers to be there along with the Rangers, it would be twenty-two thousand dollars. And so that additional amount is set aside for um the other parties that the police department felt should be there, I mean, the Sheriff's Office and Rangers cannot act independently from an officer. Um, explosive detective dogs during the height of the incident um is is really the kind of the staffing plan that they're looking at right now. And so what's being charged is an hourly rate times the number of hours that are needed. So we put into this license agreement that that the amount billed to Frozen Day Guy Days would not exceed the agreed upon amount, which was thirty-two thousand seven hundred.
But I I don't understand why it went up so much from two years ago.
May I, may I address this for a second?
Yes.
I believe, this is Sarah Martin, um, four oh one Pearl Street, um, Boulder, Colorado, former resident of Netherlands owner, co-owner of Frozen Dead Guy Days. The world has changed, okay? So it has. And we need vehicle blocking barricades. We need to keep people safe. We absolutely need that. And uh hourly rates and to get police officers for any event, not just our event, any event to work extra hours is a big ask and the money has to come in. Uh, I did a Cora request uh of uh the the background of how this number was gotten to. Uh, the SWAT team and the drones were pretty off the hook and out of, off the chain. Uh, that that's a lot of it. I don't think we need it. But I will tell you that in this day and age, to be prepared for the possibility of isn't a terrible idea, okay? I, it really isn't a terrible idea. Like, I understand it. Uh, we have a different security team because Peaceful hasn't had a gig in, you know, a year and nine months. And so we brought in All Season that does the Taste of of uh Lakewood and they do the four twenty event in Denver. And, you know, we we have, I I've done a bunch of events that, like the presidential inaugurations and I worked for the WHO for sixteen years and so I we have a ground zero. We we have, we have plans in place. But what with Netherlands and and with the chief leaving and the there, there just isn't a lot of informed decision making coming to those numbers. So it's like, what's the industry standard? And again, if you don't know the festival and then you don't understand the populace and how most people move out on Saturday after the coffin races, uh, the majority of people don't even go into the tents. You know, a lot of people, it's outdoors, it's outside. So I understand it. Uh, and I understand the thinking of why they did it because we do not want, just like in two thousand and twenty, we did not want to be the super spreader events, right? So we took the 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 right route by the Board of Trustees' vote to cancel that event and and luckily we did because now, you know, coronavirus and and all of its iterations of COVID nineteen and Delta and now Omicron, it it was the right move. So being prepared is a good idea. Uh, I think that again, because so much has happened in the last year, nine months and twenty-four days, it it it's it's a cautionary tale. I don't agree with the number. And I don't think that that is what we're going to be billed, but I think that we need to be prepared for it in case of because Netherlands is isolated and
Sarah, hold on. Uh, you say you don't agree with that. I I was under the impression you have agreed to.
Oh, I agree. I totally agree about saying me personally. I totally agree. I what me, as a, as a business owner, I one hundred percent agree. As a person that does other events, I think it's
Right.
I have my own opinion.
Yeah.
Which is no reflection of this business or this agreement, none. I'm so sorry. I misspoke. Thank you, Chris.
So
I I misspoke.
As I, as I understand that this, the number that's in here was the a scaled back version on already of what our our marshal thought was appropriate in sort of the post-Wisconsin parade, post, you know, you know, like
Charlottesville, yeah, agree.
Yeah, but that's, that was the number they came down to was thirty-two thousand and that he is, he's actually actively working to find cost savings.
Exactly. So again, that we are working on it. So that's
Sergeant Fine Levin are now fine. Once we kind of came to an agreement on on the amount, again, the no more than amount, now they're working on and developing the staffing plan with the intention of scaling it back in any way that they they can and feel is appropriate. Um, so so I don't have a number to give you, but it is Larry's intention to try and and scale that number back. Again, that's kind of on on the the massive scale that's the the amount we're looking at.
So I wasn't trying to be disrespectful. I again, I just want to say, I understand how we got here. I think it's it's painful, but I I really believe in it. I really believe in what we're doing.
I want to make sure we can get to a point tonight, you know, either that we are moving this out for it as a consent agenda or even as an action item this evening, so that, so that you guys have some certainty moving forward. I don't want us to get in a case where we're sort of renegotiating this.
No, I'm very pleased with everything that's in that agreement.
Great. Very good. I love
I, I would like to second, you know, I understand move to an action item. I just really felt that we didn't get a chance that, that, that huge police possibility was put in front of us. I don't know if the boards saw it, and I just really would like to note, make note of it, if that's fair enough.
Yeah, thank you, man.
I, I'm wondering, oh, this is Tanya. Why, this is so late, the game coming out, like, why wasn't this being negotiated like three months ago? Where there was more, maybe more time to discuss this? I mean, for you guys, like, is it the town that was dragging their feet? Or you guys weren't, weren't sure it was going to happen because it's so uncertain times or combination?
I will tell you that Miranda, the, everyone, we've had meetings, we've been working on this and working on this. And Miranda is, and, and, and the police department and the fire department and public works have been tireless and about this. And really, it came down to December third, emails were sent out by an officer gathering data about where we are now in the current situation. And that number was derivative of the information that they got back. It's, you can Cora request it. I have them. You can have them. Anybody can have them. And, and, and that's how we got there. And, and they get it. We get it. So it, it's fine. Everything's good.
Everything's good, but you're, you're like, it's impossible to work with Ned and you don't want to come back. I'm curious, like, we, I mean, I want you to come back.
I would like to come back. I just also, we can't afford a thirteen thousand dollar deposit next year. We can't afford, you know, we, we, we don't make that much money. So
I understand. It's just, I'm, so I, anyway, I guess that's another conversation. You're
Later date.
Enough with this.
Let's look at April.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it in April.
Okay. Well, um, and you're saying that the SWAT and the drones might not get used? And so then you don't get charged for them? Or are they just going to, you're going to get charged even if
Correct, correct.
So after the event, to provide clarification, so the policing agreement stay, that section states that they'll be billed for the exact amount of officers and, and the type that was present. And so while, again, we're giving that high end estimate, if, if it's only, you know, we said it was fifteen, ended up only being ten, the Frozen Dead Guy Days will get an exact invoice saying how many people were there, what type of person they are, and what charge goes with them. And then, you know, how many hours worked. And so they'll have that accounting in the end.
Gotcha. Well,
After the facts for them, like, they're not a part of what was paid upfront. We'll bill Frozen Dead Guy Days after the event.
Right. And then, so the contract is basically saying it won't be, it won't be more than what you guys agreed on. So
Right, that's, we added that the Frozen Dead Guy Days had asked for that language to be added. And so it's in there that says we will not exceed the agreement made with the proposal of thirty-two thousand seven hundred.
Sure, makes sense. Okay. Well, I mean, if they're, if they want this to move forward, I'm willing, I would say, let's move this to an action item.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to move this to an action item.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move this to an action item. Macy?
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Isma?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Baumhofer?
Yes.
Okay, this is now an action item. Any further comments or would anyone like to make a motion regarding the Frozen Dead Guy Days license agreement for twenty twenty-two?
Let me just note before that
Yeah.
that we have discussed rethinking our fees for very large events. And we should discuss this further and perhaps over the next six months to eight months. Maybe we could come up with some proposals around special designations for festivals like Frozen Dead Guy Days. And perhaps make sure that the town, see if we can find a way for the town to make that more convenient for that kind of large event. Make it, keep it safe, but also make it a little more affordable. Since, yeah, we accept that this is mostly having fun. It's not all about making money. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Do you have any motions?
Okay, I move to approve the Frozen Dead Guy Days license agreement for twenty twenty-two.
I second.
And we have a second from Trustee Kums Ismael. Macy?
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Isma?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
And Trustee Apt?
It is passed. Amanda and Sarah, thank you guys for, for the work. I can't tell you how excited we are to have the long awaited return of Frozen Dead Guy Days in a couple of months.
Well, I can't wait to tell the SBDC, Dan King is thrilled. Hopefully he'll be a judge at, at the Ice Queen and Grandpa Look Like Contest, because without Nagus and without the SBA and the SBDC and Boulder, Dan King and Sharon King, and without the tireless support of Save Our Stages, Niva, Seva, we wouldn't be here today. And thank you all. And I know that I sounded a little harsh, but I just had to let you guys know the truth of the matter, because I don't take salary. And I have spent so much time putting this together. I cannot wait to be there and to make this happen and to really celebrate what is truly an iconic Colorado cultural event. If you all get a chance to go to the Denver International Airport on the ACON course, we are proudly displayed.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening, everybody.
You as well.
Chris, could I just jump in here real quick? And I, I guess one thing, listening to the conversation, that's kind of off topic, but just the idea of how much has changed in Ned over the past decade and especially how much has changed in the last two years. There seems to be a lot of opportunity for partnership. And I, I do believe that there is support for this festival in the town of Nederland. And I do believe there is support largely among all of the boards. And there's kind of a performance space idea that's been kicking around in the realm of the DDA. So just Amanda and Sarah, I'd really encourage you guys to reach out to the DDA and see if we can't work with the DDA to develop space outside of town parks, specifically catered to festivals where the need for deposits for potential damage is not necessary, because we've developed infrastructure like the Pepsi Center to host these type of cultural events in these festivals. I don't think the issue so much is the town not liking these things, so much as a mismatch of current infrastructure being used and a need for more partnership in developing the infrastructure that we want in this community for these festivals. So just encouragement. So glad to have you guys back. Please reach out to the DDA after the festival. And when you guys have had time to rest and recuperate, I know it's a lot of hard work. There is a lot of interest on the DDA in helping both Frozen Dead Guy Days, Nedfest and any other potential future festivals to really develop a dedicated festival space and event space with amphitheaters and really key in on this aspect of our community. But I believe that that really has to be worked out with the DDA where there is funding and an already direct support in the business community and that the BOT will be very happy to support those efforts.
I also think that you guys could just take a look at Estes Park, just take a look at, well, Lions for sure. And definitely, and Lions is tricky, but Estes Park and, and look at Fort Collins. I mean, what they have in terms of their event packages, they spent a lot of money, the city of Fort Collins. And they, they just, they really have it nailed. So know that this isn't, we're not, we don't, we aren't recreating the wheel here. We just really love. Thank you, guys. That's it. I, I don't want, I can't. It's too much.
And yeah, great idea, Jonathan. All right. And actually, Jonathan, you're bringing this next one for, for us. I know this came out of some emails we received. We all, I think, at least I know I received, and some others was received from a local resident. And Jonathan, you brought it to the board.
Yeah, so, um, I believe this was introduced to me by a couple that live up on Hall Road and on, you know, otherwise known to us as West Magnolia. And essentially, they're just the, really kind of passionate about wildlife, as so many of us are up here in this community. And we're, we're working with, in partnership with some folks that were revising City of Boulder's bear proof kind of trash ordinances, as they were seeing an increase in the amount of negative bear interactions, both recorded with the Colorado State Parks and Wildlife and, you know, City of Boulder Police, as well as some incidences that resulted in euthanasias of, uh, local bear populations. So their hope was kind of, after working with the City of Boulder to revise kind of the ordinance, really keying in on recommendations from Colorado Parks and Wildlife, National Parks, Forest Service, pretty much all the expert. This is how we handle bears. This is how we handle trash. This is how we handle wildlife. We're hoping to continue kind of soliciting local municipalities with the eventual hope that they can get Boulder County to adopt a ordinance kind of countywide, which would require all trash refuges, potential attractants, be kept in bear proof containers with the hope then being that Colorado Parks and Wildlife, when they come to assist in animal encounters, as when we have animal encounters, our sheriff's department or our police department is likely going to call in Colorado Parks and Wildlife. If there's consistent ordinances kind of across communities and in the areas where this is happening, it makes it far easier on Colorado Parks and Wildlife to kind of assist the communities as well as potentially enforce lack of compliance, especially, you know, consistent lack of compliance that is causing habituated bears and eventually euthanasia of wildlife. So what I kind of have brought together here was a lot of the information they provided me. Their hope was to have this board discuss, are we interested in basically updating our code? If you look at our current code, we have some sections in there regarding hunting and feeding of wildlife. But we actually have nothing that specifically requires businesses or residents to keep trash in a shed or wildlife resistant container. And I know that there's been several emails in the past few months with neighbors that are, have concerns about this, where there has been, before the bears went into hibernation, issues. So I guess my hope in putting this forward would be for us to kind of look at our current ordinances and look at what are some of the ordinances of surrounding cities from the three I kind of provided. I guess Aspen's not really close to us, but it deals with a lot of these same issues. Evergreen, if you wanted to look up, has a very similar ordinance. One thing I noticed is that Evergreen, Estes Park, Boulder, Aspen, they all title these ordinances Wildlife Protection. And basically, within that outline, you know, no hunting, no feeding. Here's how you keep your trash safe. And here's the specific fines attached to this. So my ask, I guess, of the board tonight is, are you interested in revising that small section that basically says we can't hunt or feed wildlife within the town of Netherlands? And increasing its scope to also include storage of garbage, other attractants, and addressing basically proper usage of bird feeders, i.e. that they're hung on cables and not just left in the yard for bears to kind of come in and eat. So with that, I guess I'll just kind of kick it off to the mayor to have a little discussion and see how people feel about potentially actually making this an ordinance that would be enforced and potentially folks could incur a fine if they do not follow.
Yeah. Thank you, Jonathan. Thanks for the introduction. I'm actually going to kick it off here with the question that came to my mind reading through this is, you know, when we talk about responsible storage of trash and all that, how does that, you know, I know it's not a huge thing up here because of our climate, but how does that interact with people who compost? Because, you know, that's kind of a gray area between trash and not trash. And I don't think there's a lot of, I mean, there probably are composters available that are bear proof. But I think a lot of people use sort of homemade versions that wouldn't be considered bear proof. Did you see any of that addressed in some of these other example codes or heard discussion of that?
Yeah, Estes Park addresses it a little bit. I believe, I'm not sure if they actually defined it there. Where the better examples I actually found of that is over kind of areas like Pepkin County and Durango, where they have interacted with these codes. They basically just outline kind of the guidelines for, let's say, the at-home composter. So if you're going to compost and do it in pallets, that you have the ability to throw a pallet over the top of it. Those are, would all be things that the town of Nederland could discuss and this board could discuss if we were interested in actually writing this ordinance as a draft, discussing it, and then eventually passing it as an action item. There are definitely tumblers that you can make. I myself made one out of an old water container and some scrap stuff I had sitting around. Those are largely consisted, are considered bear proof containers. And even the bear proof trash cans that you have at Ace, as long as they're ratchet strapped or, you know, fastened to something a bear can't drag, is considered a bear proof container by the CPDW standard. So, um, there's many ways to address that. Really, it's just we, in the language and our kind of definitions really provide those guidelines of what is considered bear proof. And there's quite a bit of leniency and creativity in the various municipal ordinances that I've looked over for this.
All right. Cool. Certainly, I'd be, I am in favor of bringing this forward is, you know, so coming up with a Netherlands specific idea on what that looks like and, and planned, because I think it really does align well with, with the sentiments of the community and, and of myself. So. But let's hear from everyone else. Julian?
Uh, yeah. Trustee, Mayor Proton Baumhofer, thank you very much. This was very thorough. And I remember I was thinking, am I gonna, am I gonna take that on? And I was, there was so much work involved, I just could not get around to it. I so appreciate that you found the time somehow to write this up. I think it's very much needed. We have a bear proof composter and it's, uh, wasn't that expensive? And that's really cool. What I liked was the wording in some of your example legislation that said things like, "A person shall not feed nor allow to be fed these wild animals." And I thought that "nor allow to be fed" really kind of covers everything else. But, um, yeah, I think we should update our ordinance to cover this. And I also think it's probably important for us to advocate with Boulder County in order to cover people who are not living within the Netherlands borders, so that we're all in this, in this entire area, uh, being cautious with our wildlife. And so, yeah, I think Netherlands should have its own version of it, of course. But I think we should also advocate for Boulder County to make sure that they do their version. Thanks.
And to speak to that, that was definitely the hope of this couple when I met with them, as they had reached out to the county, have been reaching out to the county, and we responded first. So they said, well, hey, we're, hope if you guys jump along, it'll kind of give us the extra, extra impetus to do this. And sure enough, if we do this, well, maybe we can use our IGA discussions with the county to kind of push that avocation for them to follow suit. And then yet again, like the STRs, we're leading the county in responsible stewardship of the communities up here.
Trustee Apt?
I, I concur. That's a good idea. So thanks for the
I concur. That's a good idea. So thanks for the work on it. And you know, I think, you know, obviously work with the trash haulers as well. Get them to partner with us. So thanks. Good work, Jonathan.
Tanya?
I know I'm all for this. I'm surprised we didn't already have this. I thought we did. Have bear-proof regulations for the businesses and restaurants. So I would, yeah, push it for residential and push it for compost as well. I looking forward to getting more of a time to discuss this, or I don't know if we're doing it now, but I am supportive of it.
And Eric?
Yep, this is a great aim. Very happy to see it and see it so thoroughly laid out. I think that we should pursue something like this. I do think that it makes sense to maybe use something similar to some of the language that I saw, which was based upon actual incidents occurring. So if someone had a composter that was working just fine and no bears came to it, but it was not on a list of approved composters, I don't think that we should be going around busting them for it. But rather that we base that sort of on, okay, this is clearly a problem. You need to mitigate the problem. And if the problem isn't mitigated, then then maybe we, you know, assess a fine or something along those lines. So I think there are creative ways that we can make this something that isn't, that doesn't punish people's creativity and you know, environmental stewardship.
Yeah, I mean, I hope we're not going door to door checking people's compost pits.
We don't have enough personnel. I mean, currently, we have an ordinance that says nobody shall feed wildlife and happen to know that a bunch of people feed foxes over in Old Town that live under their porches. And folks love feeding the foxes up in Big Springs, too. So we don't necessarily enforce these ordinances. They're more there to provide guidelines and expectations of standards for behavior.
Indeed. And we don't want to provide more ammunition for ventrile neighbors to sort of, you know, look at their, you know, the adjacent properties and say, hey, that's not an approved container. Let me go report this person. I don't want to create an ordinance that really only does that, because I don't think that that's very valuable. But we should really try to protect the bears.
That's why the most powerful ordinances are like the most powerful functional specifications. They describe the behaviors that don't work. And then if you want to, you can provide an example of, by the way, here are some good containers to try. But the the behavior is not to allow a bear to be fed. I think that's, I like that word. I like that wording. So I'm kind of stuck on that. But we'll come up with something as good or better, hopefully. And yeah, I think examples are often nice, even in legislation, to say, you know, here are some examples of or perhaps some addendum, here are some examples of bear-proof containers. But yeah. The the specific rules should be behavioral.
This is a discussion item. So I will throw this open to the public who is stuck with this this evening. If anyone else from the public would like to speak on the bear-proof trashcan idea or potential ordinance, now would be your opportunity. Catch our attention and you can have up to three minutes to to speak on this item. Not hearing or seeing any. Bring this back. So Jonathan, sort of what do you see as our next steps on this? Since at least from what I heard, you have unanimous support from the board.
I guess my next step thought was that I could actually pretty much throw up a quick draft for us of a draft ordinance, kind of amending what exists currently as no hunting and feeding wildlife to add in essentially provisions for guidelines for bear-proof containers. Some basic, you know, definitions, references, and then work with town staff, being Jennifer, our town attorney, and Miranda, to kind of clarify that. And once we have a functional draft, we could bring that back before this board for another discussion to kind of hash that out. Mostly what I'm hearing is a lot of this other legislation makes a lot of sense. And what we really want to focus on is the behaviors itself, some guidelines and making sure that there's open provisions and that we're not going to be heavy-handed on the idea of enforcement, both recognizing we have a complaint-based enforcement system and limited staffing for enforcement. So if that sounds good to the rest of the board, that was kind of my thought from here would be to have a draft probably ready by first meeting of February, if there's an opening and availability currently in the schedule for that. And bring this back to the board at that point.
I think that sounds great. Yeah. And, you know, like, like everyone else said, thank you so much for being the one to step up and take this on. Clearly, it's something we all have an interest in and are very supportive of.
Well, I would like to thank the couple that kind of brought this before. They really brought all this information, made it really, really easy. And it's actually kind of been the first citizen-driven initiative I've gotten to work with folks on the BOT. It's not something brought to us by town staff, but really something brought to us by two citizens and kind of it's a why I choose to serve is the idea that we can be there for the community to better things and provide a platform for folks to continue to improve their community. So.
Citizens, citizens who put in the work and provide, here's the problem, and here's a proposed solution. That's inspiring. That's, that's the basis of our government. That's the basis of real democracy.
Correct. So I mean, it's not much that I have really done. So I really want to highlight that, that it's really credit should be given to these citizens, because they really did a lot of the work. They provided the solution. All I've done is compile it and bring it before you all.
Well, I think we look forward to seeing it at one of those early meetings in February. I'd love to see this be something that this board can discuss and pass prior to the elections in April. That'll be, that'll be awesome.
We'll make it happen.
All right. Well, again, thank you all for for bringing that forward. And I think, if I'm not wrong, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Believe, yeah. Anyone have any other business they'd like to raise?
I, I want to say something. Um, this is Tanya. And it's it's after Kathleen spoke, you know, I didn't want to really mention too much my thoughts about that program when I was a shopper or whatever, you know, like I never redeemed my receipts. I it's very, it's pretty cumbersome for your average person for the payback. But it is a great idea. And so I do support it. But when you think about the economic bank for your buck, you know, like even like giving twenty five thousand to the paper, which is really, I kind of see it more as like support to the paper. I don't know how much it's going to really give Netherlands economy a boom. I hope it really does. But we love the paper. When it, supporting these big festivals. If we're, if our, one of our concerns is financial incentives for our businesses and big financial like stimulus, those festivals are huge for every business in town, more than any little receipt, more than an ad in the Mountaineer could ever conceive of generating Nedfest, Frozen Dead Guy Days, any other big festival, Fourth of July. And so I do think we maybe need to change our mindset a little bit on how we spend our money and the next package of money that we get, or any other grant money or money that we have in our coffers. And realize that incentivizing our festivals and for new festivals to come, if one of our goals is financial stimulus, that's the easiest way to bring huge amounts of money to every business in town. They have record days. Every restaurant's pouring out the door, shops, everything. It's it's, it's just so much more than any of these other little programs that we're financing right now. And I'm happy to do so. So much more than they would ever provide. So giving, you know, if we think in next year, if we you know, gave twenty thousand dollars to Frozen Dead Guy Days as a grant to them, it would come back ten times to our economy during that weekend, if not more. And that's just what I was thinking after hearing Kathleen talk and the relationship between the two, because the mayor had said he didn't see how they related. And I do, because I remember that program very well. And I thought it was cute. And I had some fifteen dollar vouchers. And I went and got one of them. And then maybe lost the other one in my car or got blown out in the wind, you know, and it's a great program. I would support it most likely if it came up, you know, again, but I don't think it's going to be the solution to any business's financial woes, not like a festival could do. So that, that's all I wanted to say. It's just a different kind of way of thinking in the future when we're thinking about how to get more money in town and that festivals are the way.
Yeah, I would concur. I wish, it'd be great if we could bring Nedfest back, maybe with some joint funding. Because, you know, it was a great festival, benefited the town, had minimal environmental impact.
Yeah, I agree. And I mean, if, yeah.
And this may be something where the town decides in the next budget to set aside some reasonable amount that we dedicate to large festivals and we designate specific festivals as the ones we're supporting right now and reserve some funds to help that festival. Yeah, I think there are a lot of good possibilities, but I think the idea of bringing it before the DDA is a good one. Yeah.
So my other business was, was this. So I'm glad that it has come up organically. Because, you know, I was kind of slightly involved in the lease agreement conversation many months ago now, six months ago. So it has been ongoing for a long time. So I think there's kind of two things here. One thing is I think that we need to kind of revise how it is that we deal with these sort of leases for large-scale events on town property in general. I think we should come up with maybe some ideas of what is expected of lessees and what the town is willing to cover for the benefits that these kinds of events bring. And I think that we need to be much more clear on that and that our leases should reflect that. And then this, I think that the second part of that equation then becomes what trustee Taylor has just mentioned, which is that if the town does want to develop strategic partnerships, I think that we could and should do that through the budgeting process. And in particular, we can do that. You know, there's a really easy solution, and that is to do that through the police department's budget and to give discretionary funding or partnership-based funding for particular events or for large-scale events in general. That is a pot of money that can be used if those events occur by the police department, so that events don't have to bear the entire burden of it. So that I think there are lots of creative ways that we can address some of these issues, but I do think that we need to address them and probably address them quite soon, because this process, I don't think was acceptable from my viewpoint. I don't think that thirteen thousand dollar deposit is acceptable. I do think we do need to change that, but we need to find the right solution for it.
Well said.
It's interesting listening to this, because it seems like a lot of the unacceptable parts of the lease are not actually the lease. It's not actually the partnership with the town. It's the costs of transforming the town into a festival venue for a weekend. So high costs that I heard were, you know, car barriers, security forces, and yeah, the, the whole SWAT run thing that is, is high, but it also is only in the event something actually happens is that charge. So that's kind of besides the point. One thing that I am seeing is if, as a town, we are going to promote festivals as a form of economic development, then as a town, we need to actively invest in the infrastructure that allows for a functional partnership with those festivals. Currently, we don't have a town that really actually works well for a festival. We have one bridge across town. These festivals generally want to take up the majority of the space, and that's great. But if there was a way that we could provide a space, I think if we provided through working with the DDA, potentially with some funds for town budgets, this performance space area, all of a sudden, a lot of these problems could be alleviated. The, the real issue has been getting Frozen Dead Guy Days and Nedfest at the same table at the same time with the boards that have the financing essentially to tackle this project. The DDA really wants to tackle this project, but the DDA in no way wants to design something that Frozen Dead Guy Days and Nedfest can't use. So essentially, until Frozen Dead Guy Days and Nedfest show up and say, here's our problems. And they are resulting from design issues is really what it comes down to. We can drastically reduce the cost of security if we design our festival space to reduce those costs. So my belief is, as moving forward, our event horizon on this really needs to be that if we are going to accept festivals as a form of economic development, then we need to, as a town, provide that upfront cost for the infrastructure. And that is our partnership to the festivals, is providing them with a space they can actually utilize to be functional. And then town staff time is saved, because we don't have to create these creative solutions. And we can continue to work with the DDA. I know we passed in the budget an extra ten thousand dollars of event support, which was specifically to help with the security and traffic control for events like this. So maybe next year, that will be twenty thousand. So the DDA can continue. In my mind, if, if the festival is helping the business community, the DDA is the business taxes. It's supposed to be infrastructure. The DDA is the perfect vehicle to build this infrastructure for the festivals as well as to be the conduit through which the festivals work to design and implement this. That allows the BOT to kind of actually be outside of the negotiations, as largely we were, except for tonight. And it allows the folks that really have the know-how to be the ones making the decision. And all we have to do is the BOT is to continue to provide the support. So I don't think what's happening is actually bad. It's unfortunate there was such a high cost, but I think it also really made the festival aware of the issues that the town has. We just developed this area as a new park. We need to maintain it as a new park. So if we develop this as a new park, that's now no longer in alignment with using it as a festival area. So if we have a desire for a festival, we then need to create a festival area. So I'm glad this did come up in other business.
Jonathan?
Yep.
This is Tanya. Um, I would love to partner with you guys and come up with a performance-based committee. I've been sending emails about this for like, feels like a year and I get random replies back from people. And the bottom line is we need to form a committee and start meeting. And that committee needs to include people from Nedfest and Frozen Dead Guy Days.
It does.
Of course, if they're willing.
I have somehow faulted this and I have been wrong committed for this. I would suggest reach out to Andrew Duert. Duert has been kind of waiting. His, a lot of his time on the DDA has really been taken by the Big Springs Project. He's put a lot of time and effort into that and really been fundamental in kind of navigating all that's happening and that kind of private-public partnership that's going on. But I know it's a strong interest of Duert's. I'm not big on the festival organizations. And while I've been privy to everything that's happened, being in ProSAB and on the BOT, and now the liaison to the DDA, it's not something I have a particular passion for or and that's why I don't.
Andrew, it would be the one. I know Chris Paray is interested and these random people have
Also, I would suggest ProSAB as a place to sort some other committees. Because this is yet another thing that a parks manager would do, right, is to interface with organizations that are renting our, you know, facilities to negotiate, to manage those spaces. And I think that that is going to be a big part of that position moving forward.
But John's right. We need a facility. We don't have that facility yet for them to.
Discussion was ProSAB should be. Discussion, so was ProSab should be.
So as we talked about. About a performance space that ProSab was discussing with the DDA.
Correct. So.
For a stage, Jonathan, do you know what happened to that?
Yes, there was a huge blow up with the pump track being involved in it. ProSab turned over DDA. We got eaten apart by the IGA recall election and then we let everything cool down. And when they went for the next GOCO grant, it was not involved with the performance space. String fellow was on the DDA at that point, kind of spearheading the idea of this performance space, but not always in best communication with the rest of the DDA. We built a storage or a electricity shed down there, got the transformer set up and have power basically in place. So that was as far as stage one has come is there is currently a power shed down there that has all the power specifications that were lined out in the plan for the amphitheater way back in 2013. I think the issue has always been that people can't figure out who are they're going to ProSab or DDA. And as we always tried to say is ProSab is the, should be the vehicle for design, as Eric just said. It is going to be a park, whether or not we designed that part of Gateway as a performance area, festival area. It's still part of Gateway Park, which still means it falls under ProSab's purview in terms of control, management plans. So in my mind, the design aspect of the performance space always sits under ProSab. And then the DDA is the economic, basically the financial mechanism to carry that plan forward. So for so long, ProSab has come up with plans for this performance space, but is always going for these ideas through GOCO grants or other funding, which don't actually allow for you to write grants for amphitheaters or certain aspects. But I believe that if ProSab could kind of galvanize Frozen Dead Guy Days, Nedfest, interested parties together and come up with a concrete plan, that if you brought that to the DDA, the DDA could then take that plan and bring it to fruition. I think asking the DDA to come up with that plan and be that vehicle, all it's trying to do, wayfinding Springs parking and all of these other things, it's, it's just going to get lost in stagnation as it did. But now that ProSab has gotten the GOCO grant off the ground, I'm not sure Eric, you know, ProSab's workload now way better than I do. It, that would be my suggested first step. Get these folks together. Get them in ProSab. See if you can get Duert to jump into those meetings as a DDA liaison, just so he's privy to the ideas. And then once there is a solid agreed upon design and Nedfest is no longer fighting, fighting with Frozen Dead Guy Days. And we have a design and it's no longer, uh, do we want an amphitheater? Do we want a race stage? Or do we want a stage on a trailer? If we can get past that, the DDA is happy to move forward and find ways to fund this. And there is still a decent chunk of change that we could make this happen fairly quickly.
All right. I like those words. I'm trying to, I'll talk to Eric and see who on ProSab might want to get in.
I will say that.
And.
There's a delay.
That's it. Oh, sorry. It's my internet. I'm, I'm done. That's all I just wanted to see.
Yeah. Oh, I was just going to say that, you know.
Go ahead, Eric.
Performance space was day one on my, my participation with ProSab as a trustee liaison. And that's two years ago now. And I know that ProSab has been kind of under the impression that we are waiting on the DDA. And so I guess we're all waiting on each other right now. And I do think it would be good to formulate a plan, how to move forward. I think that it would be good to have someone from the DDA involved in the early conversation. So we are understanding the scope and kind of scale and the overall goals of what it would be for both boards. You know, what, what kind of size are we talking about? And then ProSab, I think, can, can take it from there when it comes to the design aspects. But yeah, I think that makes sense as a way to go for both boards to, to maybe put a committee together.
Okay.
I can see that. I definitely know what happened before with the DDA is yes, at that time, the folks on that DDA committee wanted a little bit more control of the eventual end product and kind of wanted it to be a DDA source of income. And that created a bunch of questions for town staff and a bunch of conflicts with ProSab, considering it's, it's a park. It's not a DDA created thing. It's a town park. So I'd be happy to bring this up Thursday at the DDA meeting. And what we are currently discussing is committees and how to revitalize the committees that have kind of gone stagnant. So this is a great conversation that we had tonight because it allows me to actually bring something to the DDA about here's where we are with this and we do want to have momentum and goal I'm hearing is subcommittee ProSab and DDA. Are you okay with the idea of ProSab mainly taking on the design?
I mean, I, I don't think that that's a bad idea at all, as long as we just maintain communication across the boards as much as we can on that. And I would even say that it wouldn't be a terrible idea if Tanya chaired that subcommittee with a member from ProSab and from the DDA.
I was gonna say, Tanya, are you free Thursday night to dial into the DDA meeting?
Uh, what time?
The DDA meeting is next Wednesday. I just don't.
Oh, okay. I'll ask Jonathan, what's a good time to get in on that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great plan to have, you know, you know, Tanya, you know, maybe you get on Jonathan, you set up some, some communications with Andrew and then Eric, you could help out and find somebody from ProSab who really wants to spearhead this. And then that becomes the.
We definitely need feedback from the people who run festivals like.
The U3 become the core of the subcommittee that then can hand someone from Nedfest, from Frozen Dead Guy Days, you know.
What do we really need? Yeah, I would love to do that. I've been, it's been on, I've been itching for that. So.
Just to toss it out there, you might also want to contact Emmett Hoyle or anybody who still might have an interest in Miners Day. That's another festival.
Yeah, another festival. Right. It's much smaller, but they still need space. So yeah.
Yep. So.
Okay.
Awesome.
Next Wednesday is you guys, DDA? I think that works.
Send you an invite, Tanya, but.
Oh, thanks, Miranda. All right. Well, um, thanks, everybody. I'm not trying to cut everybody off, but.
Any other, other business?
I have other business. The Cross Gold Mine has some issues with water treatment. And they have a proposal to expand their operation when they really haven't addressed their water pollution issues. The organization, Save the Colorado, has a meeting with, um, on the 10th to, actually they have a meeting with the state of Colorado about their application called an amendment two. And Save the Colorado was concerned that, you know, there hasn't been enough planning around the new water treatment facility or environmental plan to go with it. So they're asking the state to put a, a hold on the approval of the amendment to expansion. And I think it might be wise for us to just chime in and say, that would be a good idea. That let's just hold up until we see more information about water treatment. The mayor and I have set up a meeting with Boulder County staff to discuss regulations of the mine, regulating the mine and water quality issues, among other things. That's, the, the meeting on the 10th is a public meeting. I don't know what time that is with the state. And Save the Colorado, and that's open to the public. The meeting on the 25th between Netherlands and the county to discuss the mine is also a public meeting. And a public hearing, I guess you could call it.
Well, to be clear, the, the meeting that Alan's referring to on the 25th is a open public, to our open public session for information to be given to the residents of the community. It's not a meeting between he and I and the county. We had that last month. This is the one that is, they're going to give a half hour, 45 minute presentation on the current state status history and then do Q and A from the community. So that's really a chance.
We'll be releasing up like a poster informational info about that by the end of this week for the community to know how to call in.
That sounds good. What else can we do as a, as the board of trustees? Is there anything?
Ellen, with your, your idea of this letter, is there a deadline when it would need to get to the state?
I don't think so. I think it's, you know, they're, they're having, the meeting with the state is the 10th, which is, you know, about a week away.
Yes.
I think.
If, if we worked on a draft letter, could it be something we could look at as a board at our next board meeting in two weeks? And, uh, you know, choose then to, uh, to submit to the state as a town of Netherlands or not?
Well, there was originally a deadline for a decision on the amendment to uh, process and expansion for Friday, the eighth.
Oh.
With Save Colorado is on the 10th. So I don't know if the, if the state is then delaying their decision on the eighth or their spending, you know, slowing down their process. So I guess it really comes down to, do we have to have a letter in on the eighth? Or can we wait till after our next board meeting? I'll, I'll check on that and let everybody know. And we only want due diligence on all, all sides and that certainly has not been the case. And we have been left out of the loop entirely on this whole decision-making process going back 10 years. And so that's obviously what we want to turn around. We want local folks to be part of the process and very well informed and, and that's going to, we'll go a long way in that direction on the 25th. And we'll see what, what the state says on the 10th as well.
Alright. Yeah, let us, yeah, keep us in the loop on that this week. If you find a deadline or hear about something we're bumping up against really quickly, Alan.
Yeah, I'll see if I can find out more information tomorrow.
All right. Any other business?
I moved to adjourn.
We have motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Macy?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhoven.
Yes.
Trustee Corvillin.
Yes.
And trustee Krimzess.
Yes.
Therefore, 9:08 PM, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone. Very helpful.
Good night, everybody.